This conference will now be recorded.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the August 10th, 2021 Tenino City Council Work Session. We don't have much on the work session, but I believe we should have the attorneys to go into executive session. Let me see if they're already at the executive session or not. We've been plagued by technical difficulties.
Well, if we're going to go to executive session, I don't have a link for that.
That's been part of the issue. So Jen, do you want to give a brief update on the email issues?
Oh, I'd love to. So Right Systems has been working ferociously to try to get us back on. We do have new city emails. It's just a matter of how to get all the info to you guys, because I can't obviously email you how to get in your email. So if you want to call City Hall or come by, whatever works best for you, it will be a new email that's, you know, your first initial with your last name, @cityoftenino.org will be all of the emails and you're supposed to be able to get in with your old password, but many of you don't know that because your computers automatically were saving those passwords. So if that is an issue, we will work with Right Systems to reset you. We just need to know going forward. I think that Will with the Planning Commission has gotten them all logged in. So yeah, going forward, I did send the executive session to most of you today to either personal emails. It looks like, I think Jason and Cutter, I talked to you both today. Are you both in your new email?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, oh, that's great.
I see the link, so.
Rachel's on it. Thanks, Rachel.
I was unmuted. So I have a Jen in my old email, so.
Okay, yeah, so that's how they came. It worked for Wayne too, but now he's not able to get in. He's able to access it on his phone, but not his computer. So, you know, we're working through it. We are getting him now, so if anybody does need to email you, you can just do, you know, jloten@cityoftenino.org or, you know, so on and so forth for each of you. So. Any other questions?
Yeah, because I don't, I thought I had my password and it doesn't work.
Yeah, John, if you want to, I don't know what the best thing to do is. Linda just called the City Hall and I gave her an access code.
Well, if you could just send me the link to my personal one, that'll be, that'll work fine too.
Okay, do you want to, do you want to tell me that publicly or how do you want, do you want to call and tell me that or?
Lincoln 896 at Comcast.net.
Okay. All right, let me turn off my screen sharing for a second so I can get that to you. Wayne, are they in there? Should we go to that room or tell me what you want me to do here?
There we are. Yes, please. You, I'm going to try to interface with the attorneys and make sure they're getting there. I'm there alone on my other computer, but you try to get them there and this should take no more than 25 minutes.
Hey, John, I did send you that link, so let me know if you get that before I cut this one off.
Just a minute.
It won't let me open two meetings at once. So Wayne, that's probably why you're in there alone, because I'm the administrator, so I think I have to get in to start that meeting before it'll show everybody that's in it. Is that right? I think.
Are we, are we going to go to right to executive session now or when it comes up?
Yeah, we need it all right now because the attorneys are.
Okay.
Can you see me? I'm here, Wayne.
Yes, I see you, Ed.
Thanks. Sorry.
I don't know where Wayne, oh, there he is. We're in the regular meeting though.
So do I suppose.
Is this the executive session?
No, we're not in executive session yet.
This is the regular meeting link. There's another link for the executive session which.
I got them both, Jen. Thank you.
This is ridiculous. Forward. Okay.
I got one from the clerk, the treasurer earlier. Is that the one? I was on that just to, so I can go back.
Ed, you should have an email with the executive link, executive session link.
Okay.
Okay, nobody was, it wasn't opened up yet because Jen's the host and Jen was on this one and she can't be the host of both. So Jen's going to go over there right now and host that one.
And so I'll leave here. All right.
Ladies and gentlemen, well, we have one minute left. Is everybody back? We have Wayne, Jen, Rachel, Linda, John, Jason, Linda, Rana, George, Cutter. We are missing John O'Callahan, I believe. Message him. Is John O'Callahan with us?
I don't see him.
I don't see him on here.
Okay. All right. Well, at 7:30, I'm sure he'll be back in a second here. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the August 10th, 2021 Tenino City Council meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember O'Callahan, who will likely be joining us shortly. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
I chatted a little flag out. All right, that brings us to agenda approval.
Of the agenda, I moved to approve the agenda with the addition of the contract between Fire District 12 and the City of Tenino.
We have a motion from Councilmember Godevac to approve the agenda with the addition of contract for services with the Fire District. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to approval of minutes for the 7/27/21 meeting. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Councilmember O'Callahan has told me he's going to be right here. Oh, there he is. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the 7/27 meeting. Is there any discussion? Welcome back, John.
Thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to the consent calendar consisting of July 28, 2021 through August 10, 2021. Payroll EFTs in the amount of $24,938.03, claims checks number 30047 through 30074, and EFTs in the amount of $202,611.44 for a grand total of $227,549.47. No liquor or cannabis license.
More approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. I was just looking up the, that's, all right. That brings us to, we had our executive session. We have no presentations on the agenda. That brings us to public comment. If there's anyone in the public that would like to provide comment, please do so at this time. You'll be given three minutes. State your name and address. Going once, going twice, moving on. That brings us to old business. Under old business, we had an addition of Fire District 12 Contract for Service presented or asked for, asked for by Councilmember Godevac. So Councilmember Godevac, do you have anything for the good of the order?
No, I don't. I just think it's, it's, we all understand exactly what the mediation was and the agreement that was reached and I think we should just move on with it.
Okay, do you have, are you making a motion?
I'm, I move that we approve the contract between the City of Tenino and the Fire District.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, again, as you all know, I am also part of the Fire Commission. I'm the chairman of the commission. I will sit this vote out this way that there's no conflict of interest.
Thank you, Mr. O'Callahan. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to new business. Review Joint Agreement for Legal Services. Pull that up on the agenda. This agreement is entered into and between the City of Lacey, Tumwater, Olympia, Yelm, Tenino, and Thurston County. The entities are all Washington corporations referred to herein as the parties. The parties agree to contract with each other to assist the parties in determining the process and policies for responding to legislation passed in 2021 that affects police and fire response. Interim Chief Hutchings, do you have any comments on the joint services agreement?
Mayor, I do not yet.
Okay, so this is just on here for review and then, well, it says recommended approve agreement, but I don't believe we're in a hurry to approve this. So it is entirely up to the council if they've had time to review it. This is, you know, this is responding to some of the legislative changes that have happened and trying to work together legally to figure out, you know, how we can respond, how we can work together. The chief has attended some meetings between all the police chiefs and some of the, you know, prosecutors and stuff like that to talk about some of these changes. There's going to be, there's a lot of work to be done, a lot of things to consider, and if something comes up, you know, we all need to work together on it.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment?
Yes, sir.
It's much like Gumby, when you can bend and shape and takes different forms, or like Plato, because the different jurisdictions around the state are viewing this and have a different interpretation than others. So it's almost pitting one against the other. For example, I think I mentioned at the last council meeting, Seattle, Bellevue, and Bellingham are said to be saying that, oh, it's very clear and nothing changes business as usual. However, in Thurston County, and I can speak for Thurston County, the sheriff and the chiefs and the prosecutor and each jurisdiction's legal advisor have a completely different take on it to where it's, definitions still need to be made and there's contradictory language and it's very clear that it's not business as usual. And just last weekend, the State Patrol had an incident that's been reported on the news regarding a mentally ill subject on the freeway dancing around in the traffic and they couldn't do anything about it because it was a mental illness call. And the law clearly says, no crime, you don't respond, you don't do anything. Medics wouldn't respond or couldn't respond and mental health professionals wouldn't respond because it's on the freeway and it's not rendered static and safe. So once the State Patrol had enough probable cause to arrest, they arrested the subject. So he was taken to jail rather than to a mental health facility. So there's still, the State Patrol made a comment in the paper that things have changed now because of this legislation. So we're still bending and shaping as we go. And I have a, I stopped by the Fire District 12 today and the chief wasn't available, but we're going to be doing some type of a coordinated effort, mutual indoctrination, training, whatever you want to call it. Where are we going to go from here? I'm kind of sorting it out. So are we going to respond to help Fire District 12 or not? And my guess or a gut reaction is we're going to help because we still have a duty to the community for caretaking. But in which situation is going to be very, very fluid and ever evolving. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Wayne?
Sir.
To just back up what Chief was saying, you guys know that I work security at night. I've had calls that are going unanswered. So if it's vagrancy, loitering, or any of that kind of stuff, if you can't prove that there's an actual crime going on besides those that are crimes, we're being turned away. Alls we have, alls we can do on my end is notify that we call the police and let the owners of the property do anything. This is, this up in Marysville, there was the incident where this guy stole a bus from a campsite thing, ran, ran away with it. He was dressed in a, got dressed in a dress, ran through three different counties. As he went from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, the police couldn't do anything because of probable cause, what they saw as probable cause. We've seen somebody driving at 80 miles an hour up north on I-5 going the wrong way and they really couldn't do anything to him about that. As I explained at our last meeting and Linda asked about that question, that's why I'm, you know, if that went stock out to me, this is, this is, we need to do something. We need to get, get clarification on this really quick before our officers get in trouble because they're just doing their job out there and this is designed to get them in trouble, get them in front of review boards. And I think this is the worst thing that we've ever done in this state, if not, if not one of the worst things. Thank you.
Totally agree with you, John.
Thank you.
I think we all agree about that, John.
Thank you.
Okay, so is there a motion made or do you guys want to review this further?
I don't think we need to review it further. I think what we need to do is wait for some, some more specific language from the jurisdictions so that we know for sure what we're voting on. One of the things that I do think we need to do is to find a way to protect our police.
No, no, no. I'm talking about this joint services legal agreement.
Oh, okay, just, this is.
Are we going to join on, join in on this?
Yes.
And share the costs? And the burden of figuring these things out with the rest of the county? Do you guys want to review this further or do you want to throw it in the trash?
Oh, no, 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 go ahead and get in on this. I move approval.
Okay.
I second.
In the second, to authorize the mayor to sign in on agreement for common interest, joint agreement for legal services. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to number six, discuss IT security rebound. I'm going to turn this over to Jen and Rana. I'll help.
Yes, I can get it to work here. So as you all know, we had some serious issues. The whole city email system completely dropped off the face of the earth. Turns out we had terrible security going on. Someone was trying to cut costs way back when and we were not ready for that. So we all lost access to our emails. The clerk treasurer email was also hacked or mimicked. We're not, we think hacked, but some weird email went out to hundreds of people. It, it was caught quickly, so it was shut down quickly, but long story short, we met with Right Systems, who does all of our tech, and they got us all new emails and they want to basically manage us in a very secure setting. You know, it would flag weird things from coming in, weird things from going out if anything were to happen like that again. They were supposed, they were trying to get together an estimate for you guys to see so that we could discuss it and approve it before the, you know, knowing that we want to get it done sooner than later and that the next council isn't until the 24th. They were unable to get us a write-up, but Sean did meet with Wayne and me and Rana at the office and Becca too because she was, was she still here that day? Maybe not. Anyway.
She was on the phone.
Yeah, she was on the phone, that's right. So basically, what did he say? I mean, he thinks it's going to be like $8,000 to $10,000.
He said, my recall, my recollection, the, the service of setting up the infrastructure would be no more than $8,000.
Right.
And that's a one-time fee.
And that's a high, he gave us a high number to try to.
Yeah, and then the ongoing, the ongoing service fee would be just a little more than we're currently paying. So it would be nominal going forward, but we'd take about an $8,000 hit setting this all up. But it, it needs to happen. And these guys specialize in doing this for smaller cities and they recognize that a lot of small cities, they kind of neglect this. And because of that and, you know, because the, you know, the computer predators out there know that smaller cities are kind of negligent and beefing up their internet security and their online security, that they're, they're prey for this.
Right.
So you're asking for an approval?
Nope.
We're just giving it a hope.
To have a scope of work to present, but Right Systems didn't get it, didn't get it to us.
Okay.
So we just, this is just an update. Are there any questions? The email system is sit back, set back up, but I think everybody's got to, kind of got to be walked through how to access it. I'm not entirely sure yet how to access mine. It's, it's wonky and then you've got all these different systems talking to each other. So we'll, we'll have to get through it.
So from this point on, after, well, not from today, but once we come up with the agreement, scope of work and all that stuff, we should have our emails protected?
Yes.
Yes.
And the rest of, the rest of the system is, is already protected?
Yes.
Okay.
And your new email is no longer citycouncilmember5@tenino.c.la.c.i.wa.us. It is J.O'Callahan@tenino.org?
No, at cityoftenino.org.
At cityoftenino.org. Okay. Reports, Chamber of Commerce. George, what's the business?
Hey, Mayor, Council. Our next meeting will be next Wednesday on, at the Kodiak Room and we're going to have the new Executive Director, Net Pitts, from Experience Olympia and Beyond to come and give us an update on how Tenino is being served by the Bureau and what their plans are for the future.
George, when is the October meeting? What day is that?
It's the Wednesday. I don't have it in front of me, but.
Okay.
October 20th, Councilmember O'Callahan.
Sure, because I got to be up in Marysville. Okay, thank you.
VCB, no report, Fire District.
No report.
Library, Linda, there you are. Hello.
Hello. So not much today. One piece of news for people who have young children, be interested in knowing this, that Timberland has gone to something called Picture Book City for organizing the picture books. And essentially, they are organized by topic now that are kid-friendly. So we have a section on dinosaurs and a section on bedtime and a section that's called Go, that's all about transportation, et cetera. There's about 12 categories, I believe. And ours is set up and ready to go, so it should prove some fun browsing for the kids and for also the adults who don't have all of the authors for children's literature memorized, which probably 99.9% of the population. And the other thing is that summer library program is coming to an end. August 31st is the last day to pick up your prize book. So if you've been participating, make sure you get your Tin Activities in. And if you haven't, it is not too late to sign up. So and the last thing is come see us at the library sometime.
Thank you, Linda. Museum.
No report.
Okay, Tenino Community Service Center. Jody, you with us?
Yes, I am. Hello.
Hey, there you are.
Hi, Council. So the, on August 20th, that's a Friday, we will have another vaccination clinic at the Quarry House. I'm going to need to be able to get in there for them. So I'll have to call City Hall for that. Is that correct? Okay, we are going to have a vaccination clinic at the Food Bank on August 24th. So we are going to do, we are going to be bringing in some folks that can't, hasn't, they have not been able to get to a vaccination clinic because of transportation and that kind of thing. So we are going to go out and pick these folks up that have called in and want a vaccination, bring them in, get them their shot, and get them out home. So that's what we're going to be doing. The other thing, because it's going to be hot again this week with some triple digits and that kind of thing, we have put quite a bit of water in the warehouse in the cooler. So if Fire, the Fire Department and/or the Police Department needs cases of water, we've got it. And I just, I just ordered some more water too. Okay?
Thank you, Jody. Keep up the good work. Arch Commission, I don't think they're meeting this summer.
Nope, not till September.
Facade Improvement Grant Review Committee, we approved those last meeting. Planning Commission. They meet tomorrow. Public Safety, Chief of Police.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. And I neglected to report last council meeting that Oregon Trail Days was a huge success from our perspective. Only about a half a dozen people needed to be reminded how important it is to be a responsible adult, but nobody went to jail and even the concert was a great success. So we're very happy about that. I've been in contact with the Fire District 12 today, not only regarding this upcoming orientation or training that we'll do, but regarding a cooling station for the next few days, I think Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And put in contact with BBNISN, with the Emergency Management Center so that we can get, staff it with volunteers and open up the cooling center. The chief wasn't available. They needed to get approval and, but the Emergency Management and Fire District 12 are putting it together and will, should be open. I haven't heard definite. So once I hear the word, we'll go out on the city's website. I'll let Jen know.
So once I hear the word, we'll go out on the city's website, I'll let Jen know. And then social media, our Facebook pages and such, we'll get the word out that way as well for cooling stations. And what's this last one here? I'll have a draft proposal or a draft announcement for the mayor to look at and to bring to council for the, the hiring announcement for Chief of Police. That'll probably be in the next week or so. Any questions?
No, but if you wanna come to, to our meeting Thursday, we do meet live at the Fire Department. We start at 6 o'clock.
Thursday, 1800. Imagine 1800, 6 PM. Okay, thank you.
Um, I have a question. Chief, I have a question on the, um, when you open up for the heat and so it's a cooling station and that kind of thing, do you think that you can email me or send me your blurp so that I can get it to our seniors in the, in the apartments? They didn't, they were not aware that Tenino had opened one the last time. And so Rainier stepped into that mix and that's why you didn't see anybody? Because those folks went to Rainier, to the senior center in Rainier.
That's a damn shame because only one person showed up for the triple digit event.
I felt it was rather embarrassing that, you know, we didn't, we, so I, I need to, I need to have enough information so that I can tell them that we will take care of them in Tenino. They live in Tenino, let's take care of our people in Tenino. I, it, it's, it's nothing to say against Rainier whatsoever. Rainier stepped up to the plate and took those folks in. But if we can take care of our own, that would be really nice. And then it's not so embarrassing when you find out about it.
Absolutely, Jody.
So, yeah.
Station located?
It'll be in, in Fire District 12.
Thank you.
And we can provide a number of different things that we need to provide to the fire station. I mean, if it looks like they need to have snacks and that kind of thing, water, again, Gatorade, we can, the food bank can bring it in there, that's what we do. So let's try and take care of our own.
Perfect. Thank you, Jody.
All right, thank you, thank you. That brings us to Director of Public Works, Troy, are you with us? He was gonna join us tonight. Okay, city planner, building official, city attorney, clerk treasurer, currently vacant. Rana, Jen, do you have anything that you would like to provide information on?
No, not at this time.
No, not at this time. Okay, that brings us to me. Uh, oh boy. So Becca's surprise vacancy is what it is. We're making, we're making do the best we can. We have hired Judy again as an emergency interim hire. She's very capable, she can do a lot of the functions in the office and, and she's helping, helping us, you know, carry all the water that we need to carry. I have asked, I reached out on our list, so we conducted interviews, well, about three months ago. And I reached out to the, the next two on the, you know, out of the top three. I reached out to number two and number three on the applicant list and asked if they were still interested in interviewing, a second interview. And they both said yes, so I'll be interviewing them next week. And we'll see where that goes. Uh, we had the Olympia Symphony Orchestra in the quarry pool on Sunday and it went, it was an amazing event. Some estimates, crowd estimates were around 1,000 people in attendance. The symphony showed up at like 11:30, they practiced till 1:00 and, and then they played from 1:00 till about 2:30, 2:45 maybe. And the whole town was, you know, was resonating with music and it was a really cool event that a lot of people really enjoyed. So we're gonna try and make that an annual event. Uh, I, I believe, you know, we had Linda, Linda attended, Jen attended. I had heard that Rachel was there, but I'm not sure or not, but, but it was a cool event. City Hall, we had a meeting about City Hall renovation. The carpenter that is doing the coffering of the ceiling and the new dais should begin work in about a week and that should go very quickly. The floors would then get uncovered and finished. We're gonna start again on the outside, we have more, more sandstone to tuck. We have some, some soffits to fix, some more trim around the outside that needs to be replaced. And then we went over the interior and kinda came up with a plan on how we would attack the interior. We're gonna do one side, then the other, so that we can switch the city hall staff over to kind of the mayor's office side while they're renovating the main office side. So that, we should begin demo on the downstairs in about two weeks. Quarry Pool, three weeks ago, went out to bid again for renovations and we did not get a bidder. We had two people that said that they were gonna bid. They did not, one of them was in the hospital with COVID. So the, the reasons that those two bidders did not bid have been fixed and we're going out to bid again. And, and we're gonna see what happens. Uh, if you go behind the Sandstone Cafe, you'll see that we've begun the dirt work and the groundwork for the parking lot renovation and that's being done by ours. What?
I said, yay.
Oh, that's being done currently by our staff and with help from Tenino Phone Company. Uh, once the groundwork with, gets done, we'll contract out and, and hire a paving company to come in and pave it. That's gonna be cool. Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? Okay, that brings us to, be that.
Nothing until September.
Okay, CIP, Solid Waste Advisory Board.
Uh, nothing new to report.
Steady.
Before steady, I wanted to report that the Tenino Arts Creative Market Schedule for this Saturday will not take place in reference because of the heat that's being planned. So they wanna take care of their artisans, so they won't. I also understand the farmer's market will decide on Friday if they're going to be a go or not. Steady, our next meeting, our next meeting is scheduled for next Friday and it'll be at 8:00 AM at the Rainier Senior Center. I did send out a poll today to all our steady members to see if I could get an attendance count to confirm that we're gonna have the meeting or not, so.
I'll be there.
Thank you, John.
Next Friday, right? Not this Friday, Friday.
Next Friday.
Uh, TCOM 911, Tenino School Board.
No report.
TRPC?
Uh, they took the month of August off, so they started getting it September.
TPB?
Same.
Okay, one thing that I failed to mention is that we wrapped up the, the bond paperwork and that's, that closes tomorrow and that's, that's all been squared away. We also did, I also met today, I thought I was gonna meet, meet with the architect, but it ended up being me meeting with Perry, Shay, and Aslan, ADC staff, after they had met with the architect. So now tomorrow morning, we're gonna have another meeting with the architect and we're talking about kind of a building layout and kind of the, the, the main functions. It seems like some of the renderings that they had were a little too truck traffic focused and not retail pedestrian focused. So we're, because we're, we're doing kind of a mixed bag of things there, we wanna make sure that we get the right mix and don't go too heavy on, you know, like kind of the industrial commercial side of things and make sure that we are creating like a public space and a campus of sorts. So that meeting will occur tomorrow, but the ad park stuff is moving forward. With that, I believe that is the end of our meeting, except for public comment period number two. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, please do so at this time. You'll be given three minutes, state your name and your address. All right, that's it, announcements?
Uh, I've got two as usual. September 11th is coming up pretty quick. On Facebook, I have the event set up. I've got a new flyer, I can, just need to get them printed up so I can start putting them out. It's for the first responders potluck barbecue. We've got pony rides, we've got a bagpipe coming down. We have music from Ray, can't, I never know that guy's last name. We've got all kinds of food and it looks like the girls from Miss Thurston County will be there as well. Hope everybody can be there, pass the word around and remember it's a free event, just bring a side dish. Also, I wanted to thank Tenino and everybody that lives in Fire District 12 for the vote that we got. The problem is, is that because of the presidential vote, we needed to get 1,700, a little over 1,700 votes. We got a little bit over 1,200, so we have to do it one more time. We, out of what we did get, it was a resounding victory, we got 61. something percent. So that, if everybody just voted the same way they voted the last time, we'll have a new fire station for, so that we can protect you guys a whole lot better and get better equipment in. Thank you very much, everybody.
Any further announcements? All right, meeting adjourned, thank you all for coming.
Undebatable motion.
Good night.
Night, everybody.